Okay, you got it. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this public meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Bridget Bryson, who works for our Director of Veterans Affairs. She joined the Lackawanna County Veterans Affairs Department one year ago as a Veteran Services Officer Number One. She served five years in the United States Army from 2009 to 2014 stationed in Germany and Alaska. She was also in the Military Police and went on to join the Criminal Investigation Division, and she currently lives in West Grant in Pennsylvania. Does a great job for us in the Veterans Affairs Department, and we're happy to have her lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if everyone would please remain standing for a moment of silence for a good friend of a lot of people in Lackawanna County. School Director Mike Butler from Dunmore recently passed away. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last Commissioners' meeting.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. Well, obviously, we have a lot of special guests in the audience today. So, we have a proclamation declaring May 21st, 2025, to be St. Clair-St. Paul's Crusaders' Basketball Day in Lackawanna County. So, I'm going to read this proclamation into the record, and then we'll ask you to come up and we'll present you with the proclamations. Whereas today we celebrate the outstanding success and achievements of the St. Clair-St. Paul Crusaders basketball team, the 2025 Pennsylvania Diocesan State Champions. And whereas the Crusaders finished the regular season with a 29-0 record and won the Scranton Diocesan Championship with victories over LaSalle Academy, All Saints Academy, and Our Lady of Peace. They then defeated St. Catherine LeBarre of Harrisburg in the first round of the Diocesan State Championship Tournament before beating St. Mary Magdalene of Philadelphia in the semifinals, and Our Lady of Peace of Erie in the title game at Marywood University, finishing with a perfect 35-0 record. Whereas the 2025 St. Clair-St. Paul basketball team includes Jimmy Doherty, Matty Sightzinger, Sean Fairweather, Charlie Dennebaum, Bobby Stott, PJ Burke, Nick Inzillo, Matthew Myroniak, Luca Rinaldi, Colton Greiboski, Tommy Hunt, Tommy Mackerel, JD Carney, Griffin Mayner, Luke Cantafio, Mason D'Antona, and manager Nate Boyanowski. And whereas head coach Burke McGrath and assistant coaches Frank Adamo, Rob Tracy, and David Blake led the Crusaders team to an impressive season with the support of the faculty, the student body, and the community, and helped make the 2025 campaign one of the most memorable seasons in Crusaders' history. Now therefore, we, Bill Gahan and Chris Chermack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby recognize and proclaim May 21st, 2025, to be St. Clair-St. Paul Crusaders' Basketball Day in Lackawanna County. And a huge congratulations to you, it's a huge accomplishment. We're very proud of you. And now, before we call you up for a picture, if our, your wonderful principal, Mrs. Ware would like to come up and say a few words, or any of the basketball coaches would like to come up and say a few words.
I just want to say thank you first to Lackawanna County for hosting us here for this wonderful day. It was an unbelievable season with these guys here. I could not have asked for a harder-working, more resilient team. They set the tone, not only for the rest of the school here, but for the rest of the schools in Lackawanna County, for what is, you know, what is achievable. And I just could not be more proud of these guys. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you very much.
So, on behalf of the staff, faculty and staff, Monsignor Van Loon, and the St. Clair-St. Pauls community, I also want to echo Coach McGrath's remarks. This basketball team, gentlemen, please stand. This team, they exemplify the best of the best. It's important to recognize that these gentlemen, they are student athletes, so they are students first before they are athletes. Some of our basketball players, this has, this started back in third grade, you know, they've been working that hard with a state tournament in mind for many, many years, but they've also had to have the grades. These students are altar servers, they serve in our parish, they serve in our community, all-around great students. And then I also want to recognize our cheerleaders. We don't make it there without our cheerleaders cheering them all along the way at every basketball game and making sure that the boys feel that community spirit. So, I want to commend the cheerleaders also. Thank you.
Congratulations. Great job. Okay, we'd ask all of you, including the cheerleaders, we don't want to leave you out, to come up to the front and we'll get a picture and present you with the proclamations.
Yeah, right? Probably been easier if we went down there.
Yeah.
Pretty cool.
We're out of the winter uniform.
Girls, even if you girls want to come in front there.
Yeah.
I need you to come right over here, like Commissioner Chermack.
There you go.
Hi, is everybody ready?
Yes.
Here we go.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Congratulations.
I need you to come right over here, like Commissioner Chermack.
There you go.
Hi, is everybody ready?
Yes.
Here we go.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I repeat.
Congratulations.
That might not be.
I'd like to go to you.
Semi-final.
The only game we don't play.
See you guys.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Good luck.
What's the bell?
Back to work.
We do have another proclamation declaring May 26th, 2025, as Memorial Day in Lackawanna County. Whereas the fundamental rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness have been courageously protected by millions of Americans willing to give their lives so that others may be free. On the 157th observance of Memorial Day, once known as Decoration Day, we ask that Lackawanna County residents pause to give thanks for the brave men and women who died to preserve our freedom. And whereas more than 70,000 Americans from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania have given the last full measure of devotion for this country since it first proclaimed itself an independent nation in 1776. Many of these patriots are interred with comrades and hollowed memorial grounds throughout the world, in simple country plots, urban memorial parks, unmarked graves, and among friends and family. And whereas on Memorial Day, and every day, we thank them for their sacrifice and acknowledge our eternal debt to them. And through their deeds, we have learned to appreciate the freedoms that are the legacy of their sacrifice. And whereas today we gather to demonstrate our unity, remember our losses, and ask that all people of Lackawanna County recognize our unwavering commitment to the future filled with opportunity, justice, and hope for all. Now therefore, we, Bill Gahan and Chris Chermack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim May 26th, 2025, as Memorial Day in Lackawanna County. And thank you to all of our veterans in Lackawanna County. Okay. All right, first up is the opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Would anyone like to discuss any of the agenda items? Okay. Seeing that there is no one, we'll move into the resolutions. First up is Resolution 25-0124.
This is approving the current payables, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the following payables. Lackawanna County's General Fund, numbers 385-558-386148, inclusive, totaling $10,727,985.10. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $9,574,837.34. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 21st, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0115.
This is approving provider contracts for the Office of BHIDEI. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the provider contracts between the Department of Human Services Lackawanna-Susquehanna Behavioral Health/Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program and their providers for fiscal year '25 through '26, with BH allocation totaling $9,858,210, ID allocation totaling $3,772,600, as attached here too. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 21st, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Behavioral Health Director, Ms. Mickey Druschel.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, colleagues, and community members. Thank you for your consideration of our contracts for the 2025-2026 fiscal year, which provide vital services and supports to the individuals registered with our various programs. The Lackawanna-Susquehanna Behavioral Health/Intellectual Disability and Early Intervention Program contracts with 47 human services providers to meet the service and support needs of approximately 19,669 people in Lackawanna and Susquehanna Counties. To highlight the contracted services that we are, we are purchasing, so for behavioral health services, we are providing housing and community-based supports for people living with serious mental illness, forensic residential treatment facility for adults, for individuals with mental illness, and criminal justice involvement, reentry housing initiative for people with serious mental illness incarcerated within Lackawanna County prison with the aim to reduce recidivism, emergency and crisis services, case management services for children and adults, forensic case management services for adults as well. For intellectual and developmental disability services, these include residential, day supports, and other community-based services to support individuals with an intellectual and developmental disability and/or autism to build supports and lead successful lives within the community. In addition to that, our programs also fund supportive employment services for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities and serious mental illness. In early intervention, this also provides for occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, hearing therapy, special needs instructions to infants and toddlers aged zero to three, and their parents and families. The program's allocation from the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services has been largely flat-funded, with the exception of some additional CHIPS and ARPA dollars, which are helping us to sustain our programs and also assist in remediating the direct support staffing crisis, which continues to impact service delivery and our providers' abilities to meet the increasing demand for services. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No questions, just a comment. I know that we talked about this during the work session, and I think I've brought it up before, but we did discuss that there is a concern that if the Trump administration moves forward with this budget with, which they've proposed, and if it gets passed, and there are cuts to Medicare and Medicaid, that would severely affect, or has the potential to severely affect, your office and what we do here in terms of human services. So, if you look in the backup legislation, our share is $555,500. And if there are cuts made that are, with the way they're being proposed, that is going to cost the taxpayers in Lackawanna County more money, and it's going to impact the services that we provide. So, the only thing that we can do is continue to advocate for the people that we serve here in Lackawanna County, especially through Mickey's office, and also urge people to pay attention to what's going on, and call your local elected officials, your congressmen and your senators.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 25-0116.
This is approving detention center agreements, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Detention Center agreements for the fiscal year '25 through '26 with the County of Bucks, the County of Chester, and Central Counties Youth Center as attached here too. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 21st, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of OYFS, Ms. Carrie Browning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The County of Bucks, Chester, and Central Counties are all annual contract renewals for detention services for delinquent children. The per diem rate per day is as follows. The County of Bucks is $650 per day, the County of Chester $650 per day, and the Central Counties $595 per day. Detention is reimbursed by the state at 50%.
Very good. Any questions? Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0117.
This is approving detention center agreements, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Foster Care Provider Agreements for the fiscal year '25 through '26 with the following. Anthony Labassi, CASA of Lackawanna, Katherine McCauley Center, Forensic Counseling Associates LLC, the Friendship House, the Jewish Family Services, Michael Kenny, the Scranton Counseling Center, Thomas Muldoony, and the Women's Resource Center. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 21st, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Browning.
Thank you.
So, these are our professional contracts for July 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2026. Anthony Labassi for mediation amount not to exceed $156,000. CASA of Lackawanna, amount not to exceed $35,000. Katherine McCauley Center for case management, amount not to exceed $45,000. Forensic Counseling Associates Counseling, amount not to exceed $25,000. Friendship House for their CLIP team, amount not to exceed $30,000. Jewish Family Services for counseling, amount not to exceed $25,000. Michael Kenny for life skills, amount not to exceed $30,000. Scranton Counseling Center for their CLIP team, amount not to exceed $30,000. Thomas Muldoony for counseling, amount not to exceed $10,000. The Women's Resource Center, Barbara J. Hart Justice Center, amount not to exceed $50,000. The Women's Resource Center for case management, amount not to exceed $30,000. And the Women's Resource Center Children's Initiative Group, amount not to exceed $17,500. These are all annual contract renewals, and all of the professional contracts are reimbursed at 80% by the state.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for Director Browning? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0118.
This is entering into a data-sharing agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby entered into a data-sharing agreement with the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services and the Outreach Center for Community Resources to commence immediately and expire June 30th, 2025. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 21st, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Browning.
Thank you.
The Family Finding Act 118 of 2022 requires that family finding first be conducted when a child or youth is accepted for services in a child welfare office. Our office contracts with outreach for family finding, so this agreement will allow an outreach employee to access vital demographic information quickly to begin to search for family.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Director Browning? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you.
Resolution 25-0119.
This is granting the Scranton Tomorrow funding request, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby grant the Cultural Partnership Funding Request for the Scranton Tomorrow Organization for the July 3rd fireworks display, to support the fireworks, insurance, and related expenses for a total amount of $15,000. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 21st, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of Arts and Culture, Ms. Maureen McWigan.
Good morning. So, Scranton Tomorrow is our wonderful nonprofit partner that allows us to do the fireworks because we can't contract directly with the company, so we just are happy to be fiscally able to sponsor them, and it's a co-partnership, so we do have additional support to help. It's going to be a great display, and we're bringing back the full orchestra, so I think that's going to be a really great celebration independent downtown.
That's great, very good. Any questions for Director McWigan?
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and we're having fireworks. Thank you. Resolution 25-0113.
This is authorizing the amended filing of a statewide local share assessment account grant, whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County, and whereas Lackawanna County has submitted grant applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the statewide local share assessment account grant program as detailed, and does hereby amend a previous resolution to adjust the proposed project costs as detailed. North Scranton's Little League costs $224,517 for construction of batting cages, whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners and the Chief of Staff to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to the statewide local share assessment account grants. And the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners has hereby authorized an amendment to a former resolution and application submission to the statewide local share assessment account grant program on behalf of the above-named projects. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 21st, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Economic Development Director, Ms. Kristin Magnata.
Thank you, Chief. As was stated, this is for an LSA statewide grant. We're asking for an amended resolution for North Scranton Little League due to estimated error that was identified by, through state review, and the, this needs to be corrected. Therefore, we need a, a new resolution from the Commissioners in order to move forward. As was stated, this is for batting cages for a little, a little under $225,000. And again, this is seeking straight, state grant money, so there's no cost to the county.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for Director Magnata? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0114.
This is ratifying the CDBG modifications and revisions, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby ratify the submissions of modifications and revisions of the Community Development Block Grant Program to the Pennsylvania Department of Community, Community and Economic Development for federal fiscal years 2020, '21, '22, '23, and 2024. For the Dunmore-Burrell federal fiscal year of 2021, street improvements is now $161,422.64. The revised budget allocation for Chestnut Street Phase 2 is now $4,359.36. For Dunmore-Burrell federal fiscal year 2023, the funds have been reallocated for street improvements, Chester Street Phase 2 Part 2, which has a total revised allocation of $169,239. For Dunmore-Burrell federal fiscal year 2024, funds have been reallocated for street improvements for Chestnut Street Phase 2 Part 2, which has a total revised allocation of $165,788. For Jessup-Burrell federal fiscal year 2020, the Sarah Braddy Park ADA Improvement Project is now $81,418. Also for Jessup-Burrell federal fiscal year 2021, the total revised allocation for the Sarah Braddy Park ADA Improvement Project is now $82,509. And finally, Jessup-Burrell federal fiscal year 2022, the Sarah Braddy Park ADA Improvement Project is now $82,255. Be it resolved, that the county has complied with the terms of the Pennsylvania Act 179 and met all citizen participation requirements in connection with the above-named modifications. Adopted regularly, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 21st, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Magnata.
Thank you. As was stated, this ratifies and authorizes modifications for the Dunmore-Chestnut Street Phase 2 Part 2 project and the Jessup-Sarah Braddy Park ADA improvements. The, this is very important because these projects need to be completed by 9/25/25. As was stated, for Dunmore, in using three years of funding, '21, '23, and '24, that's a total of $338,386.36. And for the Jessup project, using three years of funding, '20, '21, and '22, that is $246,182.22. Again, this is no cost to the county, this is through both the HUD, federal, and state DCD, CDBG program.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Magnata? No questions, but just similar to the comment that I made earlier to Mickey Druschel. The CDBG program is extremely important to all of our communities throughout Lackawanna County, and I have a lot of familiarity with it just from my former time on Scranton City Council. The CDBG program was absolutely essential for us to be able to complete projects like park projects, stormwater, sidewalks, infrastructure upgrades, ADA accessibility, things like that, where if we didn't have that money, there's a great likelihood that those projects would never have happened because a lot of the communities throughout Lackawanna County just don't have the funding or the budget for that. So, my point in saying that is, the budget that was just submitted by the Trump administration, and which is being discussed now before Congress, eliminates the Community Services Block Grant, I believe, in its entirety.
McCauley Center, Forensic Counseling Associates LLC, The Friendship House, The Jewish Family Services, Michael Kenny, Scranton Counseling Center, Thomas Muldoni, and the Women's Resource Center. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 21st, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Browning.
Thank you.
These are our professional contracts for July 1, 2025, to June 30th, 2026. Anthony La Bassey for mediation amount not to exceed $156,000. Casa of Lackawanna amount not to exceed $35,000. Kathryn McCauley Center for case management amount not to exceed $45,000. Forensic Counseling Associates Counseling amount not to exceed $25,000. Friendship House for their CLIP team amount not to exceed $30,000. Jewish Family Services for counseling amount not to exceed $25,000. Michael Kenny for life skills amount not to exceed $30,000. Scranton Counseling Center for their CLIP team amount not to exceed $30,000. Thomas Muldowney for counseling amount not to exceed $10,000. The Women's Resource Center, Barbara J. Hart Justice Center, amount not to exceed $50,000. The Women's Resource Center for case management amount not to exceed $30,000. And the Women's Resource Center Children's Initiative Group amount not to exceed $17,500. These are all annual contract renewals, and all of the professional contracts are reimbursed at 80% by the state.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for Director Browning? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0118.
This is entering into a data sharing agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into a data sharing agreement with the Department of Human Services, Office of Youth and Family Services, and the Outreach Center for Community Resources to commence immediately and expire June 30th, 2025. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 21st, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Browning.
The Family Finding Act 118 of 2022 requires that family finding first be conducted when a child or youth is accepted for services in a child welfare office. Our office contracts with outreach for family finding, so this agreement will allow an outreach employee to access vital demographic information quickly to begin to search for family.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Director Browning? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Resolution 25-0119.
This is granting the Scranton Tomorrow funding request. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby grant the cultural partnership funding request for the Scranton Tomorrow organization for the July 3 fireworks display to support the fireworks, insurance, and related expenses for a total amount of $15,000. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 21st, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of Arts and Culture, Ms. Maureen McWigan.
Good morning. So Scranton Tomorrow is our wonderful nonprofit partner that allows us to do the fireworks because we can't contract directly with the company. So we just are happy to be fiscally able to sponsor them, and it's a co-partnership, so we do have additional support to help. It's going to be a great display, and we're bringing back the full orchestra, so I think that's going to be a really great celebration independent downtown.
That's great, very good. Any questions for Director McWigan?
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and we're having fireworks. Thank you. Resolution 25-0113.
This is authorizing the amended filing of a statewide local share assessment account grant, whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County, whereas Lackawanna County has submitted grant applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the statewide local share assessment account grant program as detailed, and does hereby amend a previous resolution to adjust the proposed project cost as detailed. North Scranton's Little League costs $224,517 for construction of batting cages, whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners and the Chief of Staff to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to the statewide local share assessment account grants. And the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorize an amendment to a former resolution and application submission to the statewide local share assessment account grant program on behalf of the above-named projects. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 21st, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Economic Development Director, Ms. Kristin Magnata.
Thank you, Chief. As was stated, this is for an LSA statewide grant. We're asking for an amended resolution from North Scranton Little League due to estimated error that was identified by, through state review, and this needs to be corrected. Therefore, we need a new resolution from the Commissioners in order to move forward. As was stated, this is for batting cages for a little, a little under $225,000. And again, this is seeking state grant money, so there's no cost to the county.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for Director Magnata? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0114.
This is ratifying the CDBG modifications and revisions. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby ratify the submissions of modifications and revisions of the Community Development Block Grant Program to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for federal fiscal years 2020, '21, '22, '23, and 2024. For the Dunmore Borough Federal Fiscal Year of 2021, street improvements is now $161,422.64. The revised budget allocation for Chestnut Street Phase 2 is now $4,359.36. For Dunmore Borough Federal Fiscal Year 2023, the funds have been reallocated for street improvements Chester Street Phase 2 Part 2, which has a total revised allocation of $169,239. For Dunmore Borough Federal Fiscal Year 2024, funds have been reallocated for street improvements for Chestnut Street Phase 2 Part 2, which has a total revised allocation of $165,788. For Jessup Borough Federal Fiscal Year 2020, the Sarah Braddy Park ADA Improvement Project is now $81,418. Also for Jessup Borough Federal Fiscal Year 2021, the total revised allocation for the Sarah Braddy Park ADA Improvement Project is now $82,509. And finally, Jessup Borough Federal Fiscal Year 2022, the Sarah Braddy Park ADA Improvement Project is now $82,255. Be it resolved that the county has complied with the terms of the Pennsylvania Act 179 and met all citizen participation requirements in connection with the above-named modifications. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 21st, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Magnata.
Thank you. As was stated, this ratifies and authorizes modifications for the Dunmore Chestnut Street Phase 2 Part 2 project and the Jessup-Sarah Braddy Park ADA improvements. This is very important because these projects need to be completed by 9/25/25. As was stated, for Dunmore, in using three years of funding, '21, '23, and '24, that's a total of $338,386.36. And for the Jessup project, using three years of funding, '20, '21, and '22, that is $246,182. Again, this is no cost to the county. This is through both the HUD, federal, and state DCD/CDBG program.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Magnata? No questions, but just similar to the comment that I made earlier to Mickey Drutchel. The CDBG program is extremely important to all of our communities throughout Lackawanna County, and I have a lot of familiarity with it just from my former time on Scranton City Council. The CDBG program was absolutely essential for us to be able to complete projects like park projects, stormwater, sidewalks, infrastructure upgrades, ADA accessibility, things like that, where if we didn't have that money, there's a great likelihood that those projects would never have happened because a lot of the communities throughout Lackawanna County just don't have the funding or the budget for that. So my point in saying that is, the budget that was just submitted by the Trump administration, and which is being discussed now before Congress, eliminates the Community Services Block Grant, I believe, in its entirety, which here, I have an article from the National Association of Counties throughout the United States, which supports local agencies in designing and implementing the programs that I just talked about. So I'm not bringing this up to be political at all, but what I'm trying to say to people is, please pay attention to what is happening with this budget, because programs that, like Director Magnata just talked about, will be eliminated entirely.
Yes.
And there will be no more programs like that. And we, as the county, don't have the wherewithal, in terms of our budget, to support those programs. So again, call your congressmen, call your senators. These are, these have huge implications for Lackawanna County. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you. Resolution 25-0122.
This is awarding the designed development plans for Merly Sarnoski Park. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the designed development plans for Merly Sarnoski's Park's new lakeside facilities project to BDA Architects 200 Abboton Executive Park, Clark Summit, Pennsylvania, and is hereby enter into a professional services agreement in the amount of $113,500. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 21st, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Magnata.
Thank you. This, as was stated, was to approve the award to BDA in $113,500 for design and engineering for Merly Sarnoski Park. For a moment, I would just like to bring up Director of Parks and Rec, Paul Bechtel, for him to just speak on this project.
Thank you, good morning. Just a little briefing here. The county received 10 proposals by the December 20th, 2024 deadline for this project. They were reviewed by a joint committee comprised of staff from planning and economic development, as well as parks and recreation. Selection criteria that we were looking for through the RFP-RFQ included the overall quality, clarity of the proposal, demonstrated experience in comparable projects, the general understanding of the projected scope and the project's significance, their work schedule, the ability to provide comprehensive building, design, and oversight, and the professional services costs themselves. Through that process, four teams were shortlisted and interviewed. They included HC Architects, Fancy Parsley Architecture and Design, BDA Architecture and Design, and Martina Bacarella Architect. In our opinion, all four of the shortlisted firms were local, experienced, and capable of helping the county move this important project from concept through construction. But after considering all the proposals, the interviews, and the overall costs, the committee then recommended BDA Architecture and Design for the award of the contract for $113,500.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Bechtel or Director Magnata? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, on the question, Merly Sarnoski Park has been, for, since the inception, a cornerstone of outdoor recreation in our county, providing a peaceful, natural space for families, sportsmen, and visitors to enjoy, from all over the county, but I've been up there several times, and there's people from New York and all over the place. As a county, we recognize the need to modernize the facilities, especially the aging bath house. And if anyone's been up there in the last few years, it is really in need of repair. It has outlived its life. So we want to ensure safety, accessibility, and long-term usability. With support from ARPA funding and other funds, we're committed to making the park ADA compliant and enhance the overall experience for all who visit, and just keep it an enjoyable place for people in the county. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0123.
This is entering into a cooperation agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into a cooperation agreement by and between the Department of Economic Development of Lackawanna County and Metro Action for the administration of the Lackawanna County Revolving Loan Program. Adopted and regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 21st, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Kristin Magnata.
Thanks, Chief. The initiative originated with COVID loan program funds through, that Lackawanna County received through the CARES, the first round of funding in 2020, which was the COVID CARES money. And at that time, Lackawanna County collaborated with Metro Action on a loan program. And with that loan program, there was no interest for those that applied. There was no administrative fees that were collected. It was really to help keep a lot of businesses on their feet and keep their doors open. Now, all of the funds have been repaid, so we would like to go into a cooperation agreement with Metro Action to take that $200,000, put it back into a pot of funds that they have with additional funding, and repurpose the funds for $75,000 loans for 10-year terms at 5.5% interest. And again, this would be, who would be eligible would be for business operations included but not limited to leases and mortgages, utility payments, payroll, operational expenses, machinery, equipment, technology, and so many other things that help businesses from day to day. So with that, and it's also no cost to the county, and there are no drawbacks to doing this.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Director Magnata? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, this is a really great program. As all of you know, small businesses are the backbone of our economy in Lackawanna County, and we are committed to supporting their growth and their resilience. This revolving loan program provides, as Director Magnata stated, accessible, low-interest financing options that empower our entrepreneurs here in the county, and expand operations, invest in new equipment, and create jobs. And as we discussed in the work session, most of these businesses would not have the ability to get the same sort of rate at a bank, correct?
Yes.
So this provides them another avenue to be able to get their business up and off the ground. So by offering these vital resources, we are trying to foster a thriving business environment in our county that benefits everybody. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you. Resolution 25-0127.
This is accepting the proposal from M&amp;T Bank. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept the proposal from M&amp;T Bank for the purchase of computer and information technology equipment, approximately $3,800,000 worth. Adopted and regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 21st, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. David Bolzoni.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This piece of legislation represents the last part of a comprehensive capital assets improvement initiative which we began in 2023. This initiative consists of improvements to county roads, bridges, facilities, and lastly, upgrades to information technology equipment. A critical part of this initiative, the importance of maintaining equipment within its useful life, really cannot be understated. Cybersecurity initiatives are not only important to the rating agencies, which are reviewing our debt, and support the county's debt rating, but are also a sound managerial practice underlying the importance of the cybersecurity deterrent. The county presently maintains equipment which is well beyond its useful life. This situation was affirmed in a security assessment undertaken by Hinton and Associates of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. An executive summary highlights the findings of the firm following a thorough evaluation of departmental equipment and practices. The report itself is 563 pages. To support the firm's recommendation, this legislation will approve a proposal from M&amp;T Bank Equipment Leasing for up to $3.8 million. The total cost of acquisition of equipment, which consists principally of switches and servers, is $4,842,339.24. The remaining $1,64,992.40 has been allocated through ARPA funds, and this allocation was created previously. The 2025 lease payment of $329,288.93 is budgeted. Annual lease payments for the seven-year term are $658,577.86. The interest rate or lease factor on this transaction is 5.317. As a best management practice, it is recommended that at the conclusion of this lease term, the county cycles into new information technology equipment, thereby not finding itself in a position, which is where it is now, where the equipment becomes outdated and therefore vulnerable. The situation is going to be with us from now until the end of time. We just have to make sure we manage it appropriately. This equipment will be acquired from CDW, which is a CoStarz vendor, and I would strongly recommend its approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bolzoni?
No, not a question, but so I'm comparing this to how our vehicle situation was in the past. You know, we purchased all the vehicles that the county had. We owned, maintained. As they got old, we had to replace them, but the repairs, we had to cover, you know, constantly. So, you know, with our fleet lease vehicles that we have, I know even in the business world, that saves businesses a lot of money in the long run, because basically all you're doing is paying your lease payment, putting fuel in them. Same thing with our computer equipment. You know, 10 years goes by in a blink of an eye, let alone three. So computers, systems, and all the things that we use go obsolete before you can even think. So with this lease, I think it's going to save the county a lot of money in the long run, and it'll keep our systems and our computers up to date. So I think it's, I think it's a good, good way to do it.
And that's a very accurate summary, and I would agree with that wholeheartedly.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, I agree with Commissioner Turmack. Investing in the replacement of our outdated IT infrastructure is, it's not just a matter of modernization, it's a critical step towards safeguarding our county's operations and the sensitive information that's entrusted to us. And two examples we can use there are the Office of Youth and Family Services. There are hundreds and hundreds and probably thousands of files that need to be protected. The District Attorney's Office, same thing. And there are many other departments in the same boat there. So by upgrading our aging switches, servers, and other essential equipment, we're enhancing our ability to deliver efficient and secure services to the public. As Mr. Bolzoni pointed out, this initiative also included a comprehensive cybersecurity assessment, ensuring that our systems are protected against evolving threats. If you remember, the Scranton School District had a cyber attack that was very costly to them. I know that the City of Scranton also had a cyber attack within the last few years that caused a lot of headaches. So in the long run, these proactive measures are going to reduce maintenance costs, minimize downtime, and protect against potential cyber attacks, which will ultimately, as Commissioner Turmack pointed out, save taxpayer dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you. Resolution 25-0121.
These are appointments to the Lackawanna County Auxiliary Assessment Boards. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Auxiliary Board of Assessment and Appeals with the term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2025. Wayne Evans of Scranton, Robert Pitchko of South Abbotin Township, Robert Foley, Sr. of Troop, Don Hart of Covington Township, Richard McDonald of Dunmore, Jacob Wetland of Dunmore, Kelly Sarr of Scranton, Karen Romenski of Dixon City, Michelle Williams of Springbrook Township, Mark Schultz of Scranton, Ann Kennedy of Scott Township, John Martins of Greenfield Township. There are three alternates, Greg Shipak of Waverly Township, Timothy Habib of Clark Summit, and Dennis Mezeroli of Scranton. Adopted and regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 21st, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, do you want to talk about the?
Mr. Tobin is in training right now as we speak with some people, but, you know, the commissioners put it out there to the public, looking for interest from resumes or any type of background or letters of interest in being on these boards. Lots of individuals did put forth. The Assessment Office led by Mr. Tobin went through them, scrutinized them, took the best, the ones they believed were qualified, some that had CPEs, some that had backgrounds in reassessment or assessments or real estate, and put forth a good amount of individuals. These individuals here, and there were others too, these individuals have committed for five days a week, seven hours a day, for three months straight, because we're expecting, you know, a couple thousand or more of appeals. So that was, that was a big, major roadblock for some people. They could not make that commitment. These individuals did, and we'll see how it goes forward.
Very good. Yeah, I was, I was impressed with the resumes and letters of interest that we got in. Obviously, this is going to be a really important process. We're going to make sure that all of these individuals sign the ethics code to make sure that they're staying in line with that. And just to point out, and I did think it was interesting, that all of these people are qualified in their own way to be on this board, but there's two former FBI agents who we're also appointing, which I think raises the level of expectations with, with this process. So, yeah, so I think Mr. Tobin's recommendations went a long way, and looking forward to them getting started in August.
I think it's important to note that each board will have a CPE-qualified, certified person on each board.
Okay, very good. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Joan Hoda wanted Scranton. With regard to Resolution 119, the funding request for fireworks, in the event they set up for fireworks and at the last minute the weather prohibits having the fireworks used, do we get a partial refund, or how does that work?
That's a good question. I don't know. Does Don, do you know?
It's happened in the past.
Yeah, Commissioners, there is a, in there, there is a partial refund. There's also a postponement date. We could have it on another day, or we get a refund back of the money.
Okay, that's good. My only other thing is, you know, it's been over three months since Commissioner McGloin left us, and no one really expected this process to drag on this long, and I suspect it's going to drag on much longer. But I have a message for those who want to be considered to fill that empty seat. I hope you're doing your homework right now, because you're going to have to hit the ground running. You're well into, I would assume, the budgetary process for next year, and there are a lot of issues that the county is dealing with. And there are also a lot of documents that you could be looking at, at your own, that are publicly available on the internet. The last audit, the last budget, PFM's five-year plan, and on and on. Because I'm not going to have much sympathy for someone who sits down in that seat, that asked for that seat, who hasn't started doing their homework long before they get sworn in. Start doing the work now. It's too important to the county and the county's taxpayers. You're not going to have time for training wheels. All those documents are publicly available. I'm sure Brian Jeffers and Dave Velzoni and other members of your staff, if you have questions, they can point you in the right direction. But if it's important for you to be sitting in that seat, then it's important for the taxpayers that you are doing your homework now. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Sir?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Joe Healy. I'm from Scranton. I've been following the reassessment process of, since I got a letter in the mail assigning an assessment of almost $350,000 to my home. So I've gone to a town hall meeting that Mr. Shermac sponsored. That was very informative with attorneys and real estate people and appraisers, so I gleaned some information from that meeting. I also went to a hearing at the 9/11 center, I think it is, in Jessup, and I met with the contractor, and the contractor verified my information, and I asked for a computation, calculation, whatever, and they're not at liberty to give me a formula for how they determined my value. But the young man... But the young man did state it was based on comparables. Fair enough. So, he gave me the addresses for the comparables, and he also gave me the value of the sales of the comparables. So, those, those values range from $180,000 to $275,000 compared to $350,000. He also suggested using Zillow. So, I went into my account on Zillow, well, my information on Zillow, I don't know how it got there, but it's there, and it's got erroneous information, it's got twice the square footage of my home, it's got an additional bathroom, an additional bathroom and a half, and that number came out to 365,000. So, that's close to 347,900, so not, not a big deal, but it's all erroneous information. They took accurate measurements of my home. I was there when they measured my home. They did ask me some questions. I gave them the information freely. So, what I'm, what I'm getting at is there are some flaws in the system. Now, the young man said he was going to push my information upwards in his chain of command and see if he could get a resolution for that. But the bottom line is transparency. I'm glad that we just talked about IT, building up the IT, renting or leasing equipment. We talked about the boards for the assessments, appeals, and the problem is that in the last few years, the typical citizen can't go to the county website without a PIN and all types of other information to narrow it down to a miniscule, to small factors, to find out information on comparable properties. You can't just go in and put, you used to be able to go in and put Lincoln Street and every house on Lincoln Street from Old Forge up to Carbondale would pop up, and you'd be able to get the information on all those, all those properties. You can't do that anymore. Somebody turned off some switches in the last three or four years. You folks may not be aware of it, but that's the way it is. So, what I'm asking is to help me and to help other citizens that are going to appeal, can we turn those switches back on? And do you Commissioners have any objection to allowing the public to access the contractor information so they could get, you know, accurate information? If I didn't go to that meeting, I wouldn't know about those comparables, and I'm sure they're not going to show up in any database other than the contractor's database. So, is there an issue with making that information public to everyone? I'm going to appeal my assessment, you know, but there's going to be a lot of people appealing it. Can we have that information?
So, I believe that you will have that information, but it won't be until, from what I'm told, after January, correct?
Correct.
That the way that they're going to do it is once the, I'm just telling you what they told me, what the appeal, once the appeal process is over and the valuations are final, then just like you're able to go online now, you'll be able to go online and all the new values will be on. Am I incorrect in what I just said?
You are correct, Commissioner, yeah. Yeah, two things I would just say, Mr. Healy, is, one, the information that you gave to Tyler when you met with them, they take that information and they take, turn it over to our sub-assessors in the Assessment Office. They're going to reevaluate your assessment. You should get a new letter with the number, okay? It should change maybe, you know, in the information you gave them, it should change. And then that would be your new assessment, and you can appeal from that, of course, if you're not happy with the new number. But you should receive correspondence from them. They're going to look at the information you provided to them.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yes.
So, now that, I may or may not get a new assessment.
Yeah, it may be, it may be changed, correct.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, that's up to them. We don't get involved in that.
But now there's an appeal process that starts next month?
That is correct, yes.
August 1st.
August 1st.
August 1st.
In the middle of June, once they look at, as Solicitor Fredrickson said, once they look at all your information and take into what you had, the meeting that you had with them, then you'll get that letter. If you agree with it, you don't do anything. If they change it and you say, yeah, that makes sense. If you don't agree with it, then, starting August 1st, you can go through the formal appeal process.
Right.
And that's when you can come in and go through that. And then those final valuations, after you go through that, will be in January.
That is correct. Yeah, they have to be done by the end of November, I believe. Is that when?
Yes, November 15.
Yeah, they will be formalized, and then they will be put up publicly January 1st.
Okay, I understand that. So, if you're successful in an appeal, that's great. If you're not successful in appeal, and then you move on to the 2026 tax year, your taxes are due in the 2026 tax year, and if you appeal in the 2026 tax year, it does not affect your 2026 taxes. It affects your 2027 taxes. So, in my case, I could overpay by up to 48%.
Well, so the, and this is what we have been told numerous times, is that you can't necessarily, you won't know the, we won't know...
I know, I realize that.
Oh, okay, I just...
You know, I'm talking about numbers, sir.
I understand that, but they, what they have said is that you can't look at your valuation today and say, oh, my taxes are going to go up extra percent.
I understand that.
Oh, okay.
I totally understand that.
Okay.
But I'm talking about the disparity between my assessment and the five comparables that were provided by the contractor.
Right, and if that...
And I, I'd like to have that information for an appeal prior to being taxed in 2026.
Okay.
Do you have any objections?
Well, we, well, they did, they, they gave you the five comparables they used, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what else are you looking for?
I'm, I'm looking for the other citizenry, the other folks that may be in the same situation as me.
They're not going to give you that. You're not going to get everybody's. You're only going to get the comparables that you got.
Yeah, they're not...
No, 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 no.
We can't release that information because the problem is those numbers are under review. People have filed appeals, they've had their meetings, and quite frankly, they can appeal formally starting August 1st, so they don't release those numbers until they're finalized. And right now, they're, they could change. In other words, we can give you a number for an address you're looking for, and that number could change by January, so...
Okay, but I understand that, but the comparables have been established in years past.
Okay, sir, your time is up, and, but if you want to stay after, we can, I know Director Tobin is tied up today, but we can absolutely talk with him as well.
Thank you for...
I'll add to it too, so, and I know PJ might want to say something. So, thanks for coming the other night. I think that was informative, and, you know, I'm encouraging people to do their homework like you are.
Yes, sir.
The one important piece of information came out of that from the appraiser was for people to get appraisals on their property so that you, you know, you have your own appraisal as well. So, going into your meeting with Tyler ahead of time, you know, hopefully, they're going to take a look at everything and make the corrections that are necessary for you. It's not going to be for everyone, obviously, but you're ahead of the curve there, so hopefully they'll make those corrections. If they don't, then you're going to have to go to the next step like, like what we're saying. But, you know, I'm encouraging people to get their appraisals, you know, have an appraisal done so that they know exactly, you know, what they have. Get your comparables, do your homework, and then we'll see how it goes in the next, in the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Did you want to add something?
Yes. Mr. Healy, what you're saying is exactly correct. You're being asked, if you don't like your new number that's going to come out in July, you're going to have to file a formal appeal with the Assessment Board.
Yes, sir.
But you're not going to be able to access other comparables throughout Lackawanna County that may be more indicative of the value of your house.
Right.
And, and I agree with you. I see that as a problem.
Right, yes, sir.
You're, you're being asked to make your case, but you're not being allowed to access the information to make your case.
Certainly.
And the other thing that you said is absolutely correct. When your final number comes out and you get your tax bill in January of 2026, you're going to have to pay that bill, and then if you subsequently appeal after you have access to the information that you need to make your case, you're not going to get a retroactive reduction for 2026. That would only be for 2027 and moving forward.
Yes, sir.
So, I, I agree with exactly what you're saying, and I see that as a flaw in the system also.
It's similar to a criminal trial. If I was charged with a crime, I would get all the information from the prosecution as far as what, what information they had against me, you know, so I don't see why we can't get the information that could provide us an adequate appeal. Thank you, sir.
The only thing I would say is that the Assessment Office has made the decision that they are not releasing that information until it's finalized. They have their reasons for that, which I think Mr. Tobin has explained numerous times. But additionally, you know, you have two opportunities. You have the informal meeting chance, and then if you're not happy with that result, you do have an opportunity to go before the Assessment Board, and as Commissioner Turmack indicated, getting an appraisal is probably the best way to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's at an expense too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Donny, with all due, due respect, they don't, the taxpayers don't need the new information, meaning the new fair market value of the property. They could at least have access to the old assessed values for these properties, which would, they could then extrapolate that to a number to at least be able to make an intelligent argument as to the value of their property, and I think they're being denied that right.
The old assessed values are online, PJ.
They're inaccessible.
According to Mr. Healy, they're inaccessible.
I don't believe... They're not. I just looked, I just looked mine up yesterday.
You can, you can access them. I just was looking at it the other day. It should, after the meeting, sir, she will show you how to do it. You can access it.
If that's the case, then...
They're online.
They're online. Okay. Okay, thank you. Very good. Ma'am?
Hi, Michelle Tierney, Glenburn Township. I came to speak first on the election yesterday and commend the Commissioners for leading their Department of Elections, and most specifically Beth Hopkins and her team. From the beginning of the election cycle, where they were handing out petitions and answering questions for candidates, and also people looking to vote, where to vote, I commend the transparency and the success of the election, and to, to both of you for your leadership in directing your Department of Elections. But what I was just listening to is concern of citizens because the leadership of Lackawanna County's assessment is in an influx of understanding and giving accurate direction and information. And I would only hope that any town hall meeting that was held by any Commissioner or both Commissioners was the same information given to all people. So, we, as taxpayers, and, and our properties are being assessed, we all are in conclusion with the same information, and our questions are answered with the knowledge that both of you have with the leadership that you've set forth with the Assessment Company to work with your community. I've heard three or four different directions from a very concerned citizen. So, why are we here with that? We all have had our homes reassessed, and we have gotten information. We had, all of us have had the opportunity to question that and rewrite back what changes you believe are on your home, which I believe this gentleman has done. Why is it so difficult to find out that your value of your home is a great value and that you need to pay your fair share of the formula set for the taxes that the Assessment has made? You have every right to appeal, you have every right to look at the comparables or whatever formula they've set, but this is the reason why we have chosen to take after 50 or 60 years of reassessing our homes. It, it is so important for all of us to make sure we're paying our fair share. But it is okay that your comparable home, but you've done different things to your home, you're going to pay more taxes because your value is higher, and the formula is the same for everyone. So, I just hope that our two Commissioners educate the public on exactly the same page because if you two aren't together, how are we supposed to understand which direction to take? So, I hope that your attorneys or whoever it is that's answering these questions for both of you can sit down together and come up with the accurate, correct direction so we can, as taxpayers, pay our fair share. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Commissioners, other business, Commissioner Turmack?
Over the weekend, we had our Armed Forces Day Parade, which was a great success. The Thursday before, we had a luncheon at La Bonavita for the veterans, some of the residents from Geno Merly. You know, we had a full house, sold out, so it was, it was, it was just a great day. Everyone enjoyed it. We had Brigadier General Maureen Weigel was there, spoke, so it was, it was a great event. The parade went off without a hitch, the weather held, we had a huge turnout of participants, car clubs, school marching bands, military folk, so it was, it was, it was just nice to see, and it was a good turnout in the city as well of people watching the parade. So, I want to salute our, our active service members, that's what that was intended for, and thank our service members for, for their service. You too, Joan, thank you for your service. And then this weekend, we have Memorial Day coming up, so we're going to take time to honor those that sacrificed their lives to give us the freedoms that we enjoy here every day in, in this country. So, you know, hopefully, get out, pay respects to the veterans or to the service members that lost their lives, and remember, remember them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Turmack. Just a few things. The first, I, I kind of alluded to this during the, the meeting as two of our directors got up and talked about behavioral health and economic development. And I want to just spend a minute or two talking about this, just to be on the record, because I can see this train coming down the tracks at this county in particular, and it is not going to be good for any of our residents, and especially the ones that we serve in Lackawanna County. So, the Trump Administration released their 2026 budget request, and we get a newsletter from the National Association of Counties. And the National Association of Counties wrote an article which essentially compiled a breakdown of what changes would most directly impact county governments and our residents. And I just want to explain a few of them so that people understand that if this budget passes, as is, we are going to be in a world of trouble, both from a financial perspective and the people that we serve are really, really going to be hurt by this. The first one is cuts to the Federal Emergency Management Agency's non-disaster grant programs, which represent an almost 20% decrease of the total FEMA grant portfolio. We've seen, especially in this county in the past few years, disasters. We've seen flooding, we've seen other things happen where we rely on the federal government from a county perspective in order to help people recover from these disasters. If you remember flooding that happened up in the Clark Summit area and all over the county and in Scranton, we rely on FEMA. This essentially guts FEMA. So, if we are hit with a disaster, where do we turn if FEMA gets gutted? Elimination of the Economic Development Administration, which helps counties invest in infrastructure, workforce development, and small business support to help bolster local economic prosperity and resilience. So, just completely eliminating it. Significant cuts to vital housing programs, such as the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership Program, and the Pathways to Removing Obstacles Housing Program. Anytime that I go to the Pennsylvania County Association and meet with all the other county Commissioners, which last year I did in Gettysburg, the number one issue without question that every Commissioner in Pennsylvania talks about is a lack of affordable housing. So, again... So again, we rely on the federal and state government to help us with these programs and to help some of our neediest residents and those who are poor and those who are in the middle class. So essentially, what the Donald Trump has proposed here is to just gut those programs, to gut or completely eliminate the Community Development Block Program, absolutely devastating. For those in Lackawanna County who live in the rural areas, this budget completely destroys rural Lackawanna County. Reduces the U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development funding by $721 million and eliminates key funding programs supporting rural housing, broadband, water systems, and public facilities. Cuts nearly $1.4 billion from U.S. Forest Service operations, scaling back federal support for wildfire mitigation, forest health, forest product research and development, recreation, and watershed protection. We get updates from our Emergency Management Director, Tom Taylor, on the unbelievable amount of issues that we've had with wildfires, especially in Lackawanna County, and how it affects our people. This completely guts any help that we would get. Ends $291 million in discretionary awards for the Community Development Financial Institutions Fund, limiting rural communities' ability to expand access to capital, support small businesses, and drive local economic growth. So for all those people who live in Lackawanna County in the rural areas, this budget completely ignores you and destroys any opportunities that you have in terms of funding. Eliminates $3.6 billion in funding for six regional commissions, cutting off place-based federal investment in distressed rural regions outside the Appalachian Regional Commission's footprint. Elimination of FEMA's Shelter and Services Program, which provides funding to counties to offset the costs of food, shelter, and other supportive services for migrants. Elimination, this one I will never understand, elimination of the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, which helps low-income households pay their heating and cooling bills. We just voted on this maybe two months ago. Our Director, Krista Magnata, got up at the podium and talked about how great of a program it was because we help those people who can't heat their homes in the winter. And we have an awful lot of them throughout all of Lackawanna County, those neediest residents that we have, and some of our middle-class residents who simply can't afford to heat their homes. These are families with small children. I have five children under the age of nine. One of the basic things you want to do for your children is make sure that they live in a home that has heat in it. This completely abolishes that program. And I would say that that really has nothing to do with saving money, it's just about cruelty. Elimination, as I mentioned before, of the Community Services Block Grant, which supports Lackawanna County in designing and implementing all the programs that Director Magnata just got up and talked about, whether it's in Dunmore, when we're talking about infrastructure, sidewalks, stormwater, completely abolishes it. Reduces the U.S. Department of Education's budget by $12 billion but preserves Title I and Individuals with Disabilities Education Act funding. We don't necessarily have all that much to do with education, but it is important, and that is completely just destroying the U.S. Department of Education. Reductions to the Clean and Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Funds, which would impact counties' abilities to maintain and improve water infrastructure without raising rates for residents. Didn't we just go through this with the rate increases from the utility companies? How many times have I had our elderly residents in Lackawanna County come up to me about the increase in their water and sewer rates, begging for help? This completely blows that program out of the water and hurts our elderly, middle-class, and poor people in Lackawanna County. We today talked about IT and cybersecurity. This budget put forward by Trump cuts, has cuts to the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, which impacts technical services provided to state and local governments through programs like the Multi-State Elections Infrastructure Information Sharing and Analysis Center. Really crucial. This one really bothers me, especially since I've been here almost two years and have seen how these programs help people. Reduction to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, reducing the budget by 26% from fiscal year 2025, and impacting agencies like the National Institute of Health, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. The reason I'm bringing this up is because if this goes through, you are going to see devastating cuts to Medicare and Medicaid. And all the people that come through our door here that rely on those services are going to be impacted. And what's that going to do to us? We can't close, we can't close county government down, we can't shut our doors. Those people are going to be coming through our doors, in fact, more will be coming through, and we are going to have to bear the burden of the cost because we're not going to be able to turn them away. So essentially, that means that we, our expenditures are going to go up probably dramatically. Cuts to the Health Resources and Service Administration, which includes a $74 million reduction in non-clinical Ryan White HIV/AIDS activities, and $274 million cut to maternal and child health programs, and $1 billion cut to health workforce training and scholarships. If there's one thing I've learned from being a commissioner, it's our Office of Youth and Family Services is really, really important. I know I've said this ad nauseam, but I went out last year with one of our caseworkers, and I saw things in our county in terms of the way children are treated and how families are just in a complete bind that I couldn't have dreamed up if I tried. This is going to impact all of these people. And we, as county government, cannot stop serving them. We have to continue to serve them. And that's going to cost you, the taxpayers, more money. So again, I say this not to be political at all, but just to tell you, this is a warning shot to all of the counties throughout the United States of America, that this is a train that's coming down the tracks, and it is going to be painful. This is what Donald Trump and the Republican Party is suggesting that that happens. That is going to hurt you, it's going to hurt all the residents that we serve in Lackawanna County, and it's completely devastating. So reach out to Congressman Bresnahan, Congressman Bresnahan, make sure he understands that this is unacceptable. Reach out to our senators, Dave McCormick and John Fetterman, and tell them to stand up and start fighting out against this. Because ultimately, I'm concerned for the residents of Lackawanna County, which we represent. And it is going to be absolutely devastating, you know? And people like my family will be able to get by because we have the resources. But those young kids that I saw last year when I was out with our caseworker and those families that I see come through our door, they're not going to be so lucky. Those people that we represent and that we should be protecting, this budget just takes them and completely discards them as if they don't matter. And it's completely disgusting, and it should be stopped immediately. It's inhuman. I've never seen anything like it. And the only other thing I wanted to mention was just to, as we did at the beginning of the meeting, to honor our veterans on Memorial Day and mourn all of those personnel who died while serving in our military. And also, just an announcement, that the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Wednesday, June 4th at 10:00 a.m. As we usually do during the summer months, we're taking it on the road. So we will be at the Clark Summit Borough Building, 304 South State Street in Clark Summit at 10:00 a.m. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.